And good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And our inspirational word for the day comes from Ephesians. God has created us for a life of good deeds, which he has already prepared for us to do. Adam Clark, please call the role.
Commissioner Lundey.
Here.
Commissioner Hung.
Here.
Commissioner Moore.
Here.
Okay, we're here for the purpose of a public hearing. If you'd like to read our opening notes.
Today is the public hearing on a petition request received from Bob Schmidt Homes and additional property orders for Fortune Ditch and Dixon Ditch, Eden Township and City of North Ridgeville. In accordance with the Ohio Revised Code 613107, notice was given for petition filed with Board of Commissioners on August 11, 2022, to restore Fortune Ditch and Dixon Ditch. Construction and improvement is necessary and one can do so to the public welfare. Filing is, of course, in turn I have said, proposed improvement to wit Fortune Ditch, Eden Township, original lot 50, 31, 30, 11, and 10, commencing from Confluence, a Fortune Ditch main channel located 1,000 feet southwest of the intersection of State Route 83 and Butternut Ridge Road, and easterly 2.75 miles along Fortune Ditch to turn eye at point of the ditch crosses under Sprague Road, 500 feet east of Route Road. Lateral Fortune Ditch, Dixon Ditch, Eden Township in North Ridgeville, original lot 11 and 1, commencing from Confluence with Fortune Ditch 1,000 feet southwest of intersection of Route Road and Sprague Road, and then northeasterly 1,500 feet along Dixon Ditch to turn eye at point of the ditch crosses under Route Road about 1,000 feet northwest of the intersection of Route and Sprague Road. The filing is nature-worked petition for to clean and restructure damaged system by excavating and shaping the ditches, removing obstructions such as sediment, trees, and vegetation, and replace two underside and culverts in order to not restore adequate, in order to restore adequate drainage and process access within a new permanent easement for county maintenance.
Okay, we're now official. Okay. Anyone wishing to comment today or testify, you will need to be sworn in by our Assistant County Prosecutor, Greg Pelts. So if you'll please stand up to be sworn in if you plan on making any comments today. Can you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you will be providing is the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do affirm.
Have you seen it? Thank you very much.
One thing, Commissioner. Also, there is a sign-in sheet. Everybody needs to sign in that sign-in sheet. I believe Jessica was handing that out. Thank you.
Yeah, Jessica's back there. Put your hand up, Jessica, so we know who you are. So definitely make sure you're signing with Jessica. Appreciate that. At this time, we're going to ask the petitioner if there's any comments that you wish to make. No? Okay. Township trustees, any comments from the trustees? Nothing, Dick? Okay. The city, if you have any comments? No?
Well, we've been working with the safety service.
You could come up to the, yeah, there you go. Good to see you, Jeff.
State your name.
The only comment that I'd like to make, Jeff Hornboster, Safety Service Director, City in North Ridgeville. You want my address, too?
No, we're good, Jeff. We can find you.
Over the last several years, we've been working with the county, especially Don Romancik and his group, county engineers, on Route Road, Sprague Road, in that area, and realizing that there's not much we can do in North Ridgeville unless the downstream ditches are clean at the same time. So the only comment I have, we've been working with them for several years to get to this point. Our residents do pay a stormwater fee in the city of North Ridgeville. We will work concurrently with the county in the cost of doing that. Obviously, we don't know what that is, so City Council hasn't approved it, but our intent is to have our stormwater fee, hopefully be able to take the burden off the residents in the city of North Ridgeville. Unlike the county, how you guys, we would, we would participate in the cost sharing of that, what is going on in North Ridgeville. That's my only comment. I think that that's, that's what, there's four of us here, John Montgomery and his staff, including engineering, and his Mike's here, too, from engineering. So these are the four people that have been working on this with Don over the last several years to move this project forward.
Okay. Thank you, Jeff. Engineer's office, Peter.
Morning, Commissioners, members of the audience. I am Peter Zwick, and I will represent the Office of the County Engineer here at this first hearing in the ditch petition process. I will say that Fortune and Dixon Ditch is, that the ditches are a good project, and it is one that our office supported for some time and may even have originally recommended it a few years ago because it involves a lengthy scope, so it'll make a significant impact. It's going to be more than two and a half miles of improvement and cleaning of a major drainage course that will benefit hundreds of homes and farms which are located on more than 700 acres of land. For the record, the county engineer expects that the benefits will outweigh the costs of this project. On a historic note, Fortune Ditch was already known by that name as far back as 1891, when farmers William Fortune, John H. Reed, and Joseph Mitchell filed their ditch petition to improve Fortune Ditch and all its branches and laterals by cleaning, widening, and deepening. I don't know if we have any descendants from those original petitioners, but we may have in the audience, which is one of the reasons I mentioned it. So here we are, more than 130 years later, and I will say that importantly, this ditch petition proposal by state statute now provides, or would provide, the mechanism whereby the county engineer would permanently maintain the new drainage improvements going forward into the future. Today, the Stormwater District's consultant, K.E. McCartney Engineering, will present the preliminary engineering report. The county engineer's office was consulted in the preparation of that report, of course, and we do concur with the findings and recommendations, including minor adjustments to the exact places where the improvement will begin and end, and you're going to hear about those details in just a few minutes. At this time, Mr. Chairman, are there any questions for me before I turn it over?
Any questions? Seeing none, I guess you can do the handoff.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks, Peter. So I'm, I'm going to go through the preliminary report. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Mark Ruffiner with K.E. McCartney and Associates. I'm going to go through this preliminary report that we put together in conjunction with the county engineer's office as part of the first public hearing for the Fortune and Dixon Ditch. First off, we'll take a look at a couple of slides of pictures that show the general condition of the ditch. This first slide shows the ditch full of vegetation in one area, and then water backed up under the culvert on Sprague Road due to sediment, as well as vegetation that has built up in the ditch. This next slide are a couple of pictures of log jams along the Fortune Ditch that we've encountered. And then our preliminary report. We submitted that back earlier in November. It's dated November 8th, and it details the findings from onsite investigation, as well as our desktop review of, of the project. First off, the preliminary estimate of cost. It is our opinion the total improvement costs will be approximately 1.8 million, 1,836,000 to be exact. The written report contains a detailed breakdown of this estimate, including $0 of estimated damages. It is our opinion that benefits will exceed the costs and that the proposed improvements will answer the prayer of the petition. The benefited land area is 724 acres. On this map, north is up, and I'll try to show here. On the west side, if you can see that, is State Route 83. On the east side is the Lorraine and Cuyahoga County line. So the area outlined in red and then in light blue is the benefited area, and then the dark blue line is Fortune here and Dixon Ditch here. So the flow for this ditch goes from east to west, on the map from right to left. So everything would be flowing to the left, to the right, or to the left, to west. Based on our investigation, we are recommending a couple of changes in course. So the original petition called for what we see on the, on the left picture, the course for the terminus to end at Sprague Road. Based on our investigation, we're recommending that we extend that course to the Lorraine-Cuyahoga County line. So that adds about 1,400 feet of ditch into the project. At the downstream end, we are also recommending a change in course. Originally, the end of the project was here on the west side of State Route 83, where Fortune Ditch turns back west. We walked the area between 83 and that turn in the ditch and determined that we really don't need to include that in the project. So we're recommending that the end of the project start just to the east of State Route 83, where Carpenter Ditch and Fortune Ditch intersect right at this location. The proposed improvements for this project include cleaning and reconstructing the ditch, both Fortune and Dixon. The total length's about two and a half miles. This will restore local drainage for 724 acres of farms, of rural residential areas, and suburban residential areas. We propose to clear trees along the route, and there will be one culvert that's proposed to be constructed. And then this project will provide permanent county maintenance in a 60-foot wide easement, which includes the width of the ditch itself, five feet on one side, and then a larger extent on the other side for an access path. So today, the commissioners have the opportunity to review the project and then to decide whether or not to proceed. You have the opportunity to confirm the project route and scope, and that includes whether to change those endpoints, what we call the terminus, both upstream and downstream. And then you may fix the date of the final hearing if you choose to move forward. If you choose to move forward, K.E. McCartney, in conjunction with the county engineer, will finalize plans, the specifications, and the assessment documents. And that is all I have. Do you have any questions for me at this time?
Any questions? No? We're good. Thank you very much, Mark.
Thank you.
At this point, I know we have residents here with comments, so if you would just come up one at a time, state your name. Good morning, sir.
Don Swan. We're here from Road, which is, you know where that is. Our property there, we're concerned about the tax that we, or the assessment that we may be occurring to us because, two things. One, we live in North Ridgeville, and as our officials just said, we already pay a tax there, or an assessment. But two, our property doesn't, does not drain to that ditch. It drain, ours, all our water drains north, and it ditches south of us. I know that as, before I built my house there, I surveyed the property, and I'm well aware of which direction it goes. And I cleaned the ditch out along Marigold Boulevard, which is where I'm addressing, which is right off of Route Road. Our officials, the City of North Ridgeville officials, said that we, we don't have anything to worry about because we are there, but I just kind of wanted to hear that from the county, as that's where we got the letter from. Okay?
Yeah, very good. Don, would you like to address that, please?
Good morning, Board. Don Romancik, Lorraine County Stormwater Management District and Community Development. To address both the comments from Safety Service Director Armbruster, as well as Mr. Swan, and to provide a little bit of background for everyone that's here today, it has been discussed thoroughly with the City of North Ridgeville that the city will pick up the costs of the improvement within the City of North Ridgeville. And that, based on past practice, it is anticipated, and the, a final decision cannot be made until the, the project is done, but the Board of Commissioners has granted to the Stormwater District $6.5 million in ARPA funds, as well as we have been saving up for this
million in ARPA funds, as well as we have been saving up for this project using, with Stormwater District dollars, so that at the end of the project, we anticipate being able to recommend to the board, and I could say this now, at this time, I would recommend to the board that if the project is approved, that no assessments be set for the construction, and that we continue to follow along in our, with our past practice of suspending the collection of maintenance on the ongoing maintenance for this project. So at the end of the day, the cost to the residents within the townships, as well as the city of North Ridgeville, would only be that of the stormwater fees that they already pay to the respective communities.
That's been the pattern.
Thank you very much.
Don, do you remember off the top of your head, in the 6.5 million resolution we passed, on which we committed towards this project?
There was at least 400,000 in ARPA funds towards this. We have the city of North Ridgeville's contributing, and then we have Stormwater District funds also. And within those estimates that are required to be put together by the revised code, there's 5% that's set aside that's for the maintenance, so that's not a cost that we actually incur. And then part of that 1.8 million is a 20% contingency that we anticipate to go down as we further engineer the project. And lastly, there is a factor for inflation. God, please, hear our prayer, that that also will be greatly reduced. So I would anticipate that the overall costs are going to be less than 1.8 million, but we are prepared to at least bear that on the county side, and I would believe that we can work with the city of North Ridgeville so that we're able to ensure that no construction assessments were to be issued.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, though. Okay. Others wishing to comment this morning, other residents, please come forward.
Good morning. My name's Alan Haynes. I'm a resident of Columbia Station on Sprague Road, and I noticed in the literature, you mentioned Eaton Township in North Ridgeville, and just by geography, that ditch does run through, not the ditch, but a county storm drain runs through the front of my property. I currently don't have any issues with drainage, and I'm wondering how many homeowners would be assessed? How do you come up with the amount of assessment? Is that by acreage? Guess we'll share, Mike?
You have a follow-up question?
I have a couple.
So I can answer from the engineer's office, simply, the cost of the project is assessed, technically assessed or prorated based on the acreage of the land in the drainage area. So there were 720-some acres, and whatever your percentage is, some, I will say, some properties don't fully drain in, so we would...
Yeah, the back half of my property would head to Carpenter ditch.
Okay. So I think I know where you live now. Okay, so that's been accounted for. So it's an acreage prorata assessment.
Do we have a number? And how does that work? I'm just curious. That would drop on my real estate taxes?
Probably not, but Don can answer the...
To reiterate what I said now, granted, it's not official until the board finalizes all of the hearings, but based upon foreseeable costs, resources that have been provided to the district, and conversations with the city of North Ridgeville, and with you being outside of the city, but within the township. For all township residents, I can feel fairly confident that there will, the assessment number that you would see for the construction will be zero.
Can I get that in writing?
At the end of the second hearing, you would.
Oh, really?
There would be a resolution approved.
And we've been suspending the collection for the ongoing maintenance as well.
Okay, I'm just curious.
I know when we send out these mailings, we always have to state that by law, and causes a great deal of confusion. I have had, we've all had tons of conversations with legal, why can't we word this differently? They say, no, you got to word it this way, and so, yeah, I know. It's just the reality of it.
And I'm just wondering, like, every ditch, the benefiting homeowners are assessed on that? You know, that's how the mechanism works for the engineering? Okay, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming in tonight.
I was going to say, so don't get surprised when I send the final hearing, because that will have the total amount, what you owe, don't, may owe, not owe, you know?
Yeah, we could save everybody a lot of anxiety and a lot of phone calls, but that's the way it needs to be worded.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Joe Bardick. I own a farm between Reed and Creekwood Golf Course. Unfortunately, I see a few problems with this project. One, fact that, what they've been just talking about, the wording in this letter about being assessed fees, you say you won't assess any fees for construction, you guarantee that. That doesn't mean going forward with maintenance, what's going to happen with that?
No, we always suspend those. We've been suspending those. There's a very clear pattern of doing that.
Okay.
So...
I mean, if there is a clear pattern of doing that, why can't you just put in the right...
Well...
I know, you can't do it for legal purposes.
Who's on first?
But you could, and then that would just prevent anybody in the future from trying to assess fees.
Well, wait a minute. Wait a minute. No, I, no, well, before you move forward, is my understanding is we're waiving the fees for now, but I don't see how 25 or 30 years ago, it leaves it open that we could charge fees, correct?
Or even four years, or six years from now, right?
No, I'm just asking that question. I think you can.
We're talking about two different issues. The issue number one is, you know, we are required under the Ohio law to, in that letter that you received, to put those magic words. It's nothing that we've concocted or anything. It's just what we're required to do.
Magic words, yes.
Talk to your legislator. And then, as the commission, as the board has stated under, and Don Romancheck has stated too, it's customary that those fees are not, are those assessments are not made.
All right. Let's move to something else.
Oh, wait a minute. My question hasn't been answered, though, has it?
No, it hasn't. It hasn't. We're just going to keep going around and circling.
Wait, wait, wait. No, let me ask you, no, this is a public hearing, so this doesn't stop maybe, let's say, 20, 30 years from now, the growth is bad, and there could be another assessment, but that would be another hearing?
David, what about even five, what about 10 years?
What I don't see five or 10 years from now, because I don't see what the work that they're doing. I don't see coming back and assessing, do you? I mean, I'm asking legal.
I don't know. Yeah, I'm not going to, but the possibility of something changing with the maintenance fund, I mean, yeah, that's possible, to your point about 30 years down the line.
You see what I'm saying, or no?
See, Mr. Moore, there's a creek slightly north to me in North Ridgeville that Ridgeville's been cleaning out between Reed and Island. Now, they've cleaned it out twice already this year. Okay? So, you know, is that, they want an easement on my property on each side of the creek. So who's going to, how many times, it's not set how many times they are going to clean the creek out. It could be yearly, it could be twice a year. That's not going to be, until we find out how many times they plan on this maintenance.
But you're in North Ridgeville, correct?
I'm in Eaton Township. I'm making that as a comparison, okay? If that's the way they're going to maintain these waterways, Ridgeville cleaned that creek out twice this year, okay? And getting back to the Ridgeville engineer, he said that they've done all they could do. You could, instead of having Dixon ditch go into Fortune ditch, you could extend the creek from Reed and have it connect to Dixon. Now, there are power lines that border Ridgeville and Eaton Township. You could make a creek that extends all the way down there. I wouldn't say all avenues have been exhausted, exactly. Another issue, the culvert that you plan on replacing, is that on Sprague Road? Real quick, the culvert replacement. Is that on Sprague? All right.
The culvert that we plan on replacing is actually in the golf course. There are two culverts now. We plan to take those two out and replace it with one.
Okay. An issue where the water bottlenecks is on Reed Road, the culvert pipe going underneath Reed Road is eight feet wide, and it's half-filled with sediment. It bottlenecks there. That, besides the road slowly deteriorating there for years, that culvert pipe needs to be widened. It's not going to, you're not going to help the water flow all the way down through there unless that culvert pipe is replaced also. That needs to be looked at.
I think they're looking at it now, that's why. These are good observations.
And then another thing I want to bring to mention, like somebody said, they're going to create this two and a half, two and a half mile area, right, along all these waterways, where they're going to want easements and access to your property. It's going to create a nightmare for property owners. You're going to, every idiot with a dirt bike and a four-wheeler is going to start trespassing on the property. Which brings to my point, you do not need permanent easements. If you want to come into my property and clean it out, I'm all for that. One time, it's, my father bought this property in the early 60s, it's never been cleaned out since he bought it. I don't see why you constantly need to come in and do maintenance on it. It's never been cleaned out. If you want to come in and clean it out, that's fine, and then be done with it. It'll be good for another 80 years. That's another issue. I've got some more, but they're slipped my mind, I probably move them back.
There'll be another hearing.
Other public comment? Yes, sir.
Good morning. Andy McDowell, 31666 Sprague. So I'm one of the handful of people in North Ridgeville that are on the north side of Sprague Road. And for full disclosure, we had an onsite meeting with a couple of the representatives here at that north side of Sprague a few weeks ago, looking at bridges across properties across that ditch and other, you know, onsite features there. But I wanted to get a little bit more clarification. You said the permanent easement's going to be 60 feet, and how wide is the construction easement going to be, or is there going to be a separate construction easement on this project?
We are not currently proposing a separate construction easement.
So since this is, my other question is, you know, are my property there, I'm one property removed from the county line, so once you get past me, it's one other owner, and then you hit Homestead Township. You know, with our properties there, it's not along the edge of a farm field or on the back 40 somewhere, that's our backyard. So I have a chain link fence back there, I got a massive concrete bridge that a fire department just had to use a past weekend to access a brush fire that was back in the woods back in there. So I'm concerned, you know, with this being an easement, you know, a third-party interest being basically taken by force from us, if the fence has to be moved, the bridge has to be dealt with, and my septic tile outlet comes right out in there, too. If any of that stuff is damaged or has to be removed, why is the cost to replace any of that on me, or is there a function in there that if the chain link has to be moved or torn out, or if the bridge has to be removed, which is a substantial thing, and none of them felt that it would, probably, because we were all looking at it, or the septic tile outlet gets damaged, I want to know what kind of compensation the landowners are going to have for any of that kind of property damage. Or property damage coming in and out, for that matter, but, unless I'm, anything involving grass seed, I'm not that concerned about.
So to answer those questions, first of all, the bridges that he's talking about, we believe those are not creating a problem, we can leave those in place. If there is damage to other structures, then it would be the contractor or the county's responsibility to fix something that they damaged during, during construction. As far as the outlet pipe for the septic, we're going to run into a number of those throughout this project, not only septic outlet pipes, but also farm tiles, and those would be, if there's any damage to those, that would be repaired, and we would also make sure there's a, there's a good outlet. And that's part of the goal of this project, is to make sure there's a good outlet for all of those pipes coming into the ditch.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we work on a lot of these projects, we, I think we have a pretty good record of being responsible. We don't come in and tear things up and say, good luck. You know, we try to be good neighbors, good citizens, good stewards, and make sure we do it the proper way, so, and I think we have a pretty good record of doing that.
Do I answer all your questions?
We wouldn't want it any other way. You know, Ridgeville was there, he was there, county stormwater was there, it seemed like it was a good discussion at the time as well. I think my one final question, you said the timeline, you're lucky to maybe have boots on the ground by this time next year, is that correct? Lucky to have boots on the ground? And you're starting on the west side, working your way east?
From a construction standpoint, we'll, we'll start west and work our way east, and a big part of the driver on this is a little bit up in the air, but probably we're looking at, after the second public hearing, there would be a 30-day period, and then we would have to go out to bid, and then award a contract and actually mobilize and whatnot. So I think the statement that you've made is fairly accurate. Might be a month or two earlier, might be later. It will also be weather-dependent, of course, so...
Excluding weather from start to finish, how long you estimate the timeline of the project? Weather excluded? Four months?
Four months.
I did have one more question. It's regarding to the property issues and the damages and so on. The chain link fence that I mentioned is going to be clearly within the five foot on one side. So I don't know if that factors into anything or not, in terms of it having to be removed or what the deal is, but that chain link fence clearly falls within what the easement area is going to be. So I just want to make sure that, I'm not as concerned about a septic outlet that's easy to fix, but fencing, I want to make sure that that's not going to be an issue. Not that it doesn't have its share of issues, but...
Okay. No, thanks for bringing that to our attention. So, Don?
Just real quick, on that, that is on the, the non-working side, so it's there if we needed to do some construction or something on the other side to do a repair to the slope. And so for the time being, we don't see the fences being an issue and being in the way, and it would remain. We don't see interfering with it. If we did, we would have the ability to replace, replace it, as it's not part, it's not impeding our ability to do inspections and long-term maintenance, but duly noted, thank you.
The wetland area that's on the north side of Sprague, I guess it would be east of Root Road, there's a large wetland area, once it leaves my, the couple residential properties that are in Ridgeville there, and before it gets over to the Root-Sprague intersection, it goes through a pretty large area of wetlands in there. And I know that that part of the ditch is also going to be channelized or redone, but it also seems like it would help everybody else downstream if those wetlands can continue to do what they're supposed to do, which is take a bunch of that floodwater and that storm surge water and keep it into those wetlands. But if that ditch is channelized there, that wetland's going to not function the way it's supposed to. So I don't know if that's part of the engineering process or not, to make sure that it gets into those wetlands and can come out of those wetlands. I mean, that's what they're for, so I'm just hoping that part of the engineering includes that.
Yeah. Mark?
That's all I have.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. McDowell.
We would not anticipate a major change in the functionality of the wetlands. We're talking about removing a small amount of sediment from the ditch. So the wetlands, we would see for sure any water coming from overland would still get into those wetlands before it gets to the ditch, but then in periods of larger rain events, that ditch is still going to spill out of its banks and into the wetlands, as it did before.
Great. Okay. Others wishing to speak this morning?
Morning. Jim Rader with Island Road Holdings. I just want to, I guess, mark on this 60-foot wide, I don't know if you, the 60-foot wide, I think five foot on one side, I'm not sure how wide the ditch is, and then how far does that leave on the other side?
So that does vary, the ditch varies in width from the downstream to the upstream end. I would have to go back and look, especially like through your property for sure, to see what the width of the ditch is. But the access path, we would at least have 15 feet and possibly up to 25 feet for the access path.
Okay. And I guess my only concern is the 25 feet on the side that we talked about, having it basically takes away any tree line, any protection from the ag...
basically takes away any tree line, any protection from the ag field, which you're gonna get more sediment buildup. You're gonna have more maintenance. So I would just look at certain situations, maybe we, do we really need that? If we can get access, I mean, you can't even, I mean, how wide's a, how wide's a road's? I mean, fourteen feet is probably all you can get something down a road. So I gotta think fourteen feet, you can get equipment back there for access.
Yeah, and so the, the width of the easement really has kinda been based on past practice. But that's something we can definitely look at to see if we can narrow that easement down. We need to talk to the contractors, too, to determine how much area they need to work in to make sure they can complete the project. But that's definitely something we can, we can explore if that's the desire of the board.
And, and that would be, my concern is try to salvage some trees. There's some beautiful hardwoods there. It is almost a retaining wall. Right now, it protects actually the, the, the one structure on the side. And as long as you can get in and out of there, I just, I really question, and I think we will walk through and tag some of those trees and see if we can work on some of that.
Yes, that is the plan. We've, we're gonna look at trying to save as many of the trees as we can through that access path. Some of them are very nice trees, and they wouldn't necessarily need to come out.
And then, so four months total, four months total, I mean, I can probably hit all these questions with it. We'll go back and forth. So four months total construction?
Yeah, and that's an approximate number. Some of that may depend on when we start. If we are working through the winter, we're gonna need to give enough time so that they can stabilize when, in the spring. So, yeah, that, that's an estimate at this point.
And, and my only concern is, as long as we have time, if, if trees are gonna come down, I wanna control that and at least timber it and do it responsibly and get value out of that woods. So just kinda like to be part of that process and understand when that would happen.
Certainly, yep. We will, we'll work with you to make sure you can, you know what's coming down and what's staying.
Okay. And can we get a copy of the report? Can we see the engineer report? Is it online?
Yeah, is that online yet? Or, okay. But yeah, it's, it's a public record.
Okay, so that would probably show schedule costs. That would show.
It does not have schedule yet.
Okay.
Yeah, but it does have the cost, has a breakdown of all the costs involved.
Okay. I think that was everything I had. All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. The follow-up list, right? Okay.
I just would like to remind the commissioners that my property sits in a flood zone. And a lot of these areas sit in a flood zone. My father, like I said, purchased it in the early sixties, and it was in a flood zone. So just can, I just ask you, consider how many people have been tied into these, this ditch when it sits in a flood zone. Ultimately, that's what this creek's supposed to do. It's supposed to flood. That's why it's in a flood zone. So even with all this, this project, after it's done, my property is still gonna sit in a flood zone. So just consider all the people, houses that have been added to this ditch, causing it to, you know, be worse of a problem. And any fees that are gonna obviously be assessed in the future, those people that have been added into a ditch that's in a flood zone, those people should be assessed. Builders, houses, going forward. Also, too, for the next hearing, hopefully we could have a total amount of how much the county has set aside. Now, we know it's gonna cost one-point-eight million. We know that there's four-hundred-and-some-thousand set aside, and we heard percentages here and there. But it would be nice to know at the next hearing, a dollar amount of how much money you've got set aside for this project. That's all.
Okay. Others wishing to make public comment this morning? Yes, sir.
Name's Bill Sutter, three-one-six-seven-eight Sprague. Just have another question regarding the easement. So if one was to have a, a structure, a house on this easement, in the easement zone, how would that be handled?
So this is a structure that we actually have looked at. It's on the opposite side of where the access path plans to be. We will, we can show on the easement or the plot, the plat, that there isn't a, a structure within the easement area, if it ends up being within the area, and show that it's, it's to remain, that we will not be impacting it.
Others wishing to speak this morning? Going once, twice? Yes, sir. How, you have a follow-up? Mr. McDowell? Will you come up to the podium, please? We're, it's a public meeting. We're putting out to the public. Thank you.
Sorry, when will draft easement be drafted and prepared, and will be able to be reviewed by the landowners impacted? And will it be a one-size-fits-all easement document? Will both parties have to sign? Is this just gonna be unilaterally language in the easement, signed off and approved by the county, and that's all she wrote?
Peter?
Peter Swick again. The, sir, the, Andy, the ditch petition process specifies most of the answers. But the commissioners would have to authorize the engineers to begin the survey and prepare the plans. That's for another hearing, hopefully the next hearing. And at that point, we would have survey information from which we could, from which KEM would prepare the plat eventually. I will say that the statute requires the filing of the plat. It would be created by, actually, I think it's created by your action, but the plat would be filed after the construction is finished, so to, as to incorporate all as-built elements. And at that time, the, the petition would be completed to that point.
Does that answer your question, sir?
Thanks. Okay, thank you. Other comments this morning? Any other final comments, staff? No? We're good? Okay, well, at this point, we have a decision to make on whether we're going to proceed or whether we're going to dismiss the petition. I make a motion at this time that we decide to proceed with the project.
You need a motion.
I'm sorry, I didn't close public hearing. I'm sorry, I've done that before. Yeah. We'll make the first motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Discussion. Commissioner Lundey.
Aye.
Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Hung.
Yes.
Okay, now at this time, we need to decide whether we wish to proceed with the project survey and design or whether we'll be dismissing the petition. I would make the motion that we proceed with the project survey and design.
Second.
Discussion. Would you like me to read that?
Yes, if you would, please.
Proceed with the project survey and design for proposed improvement, and is necessary and conducive to the public welfare and reasonable, certain that the benefits of the proposed improvement will outweigh its cost. Commissioners determine route and termini, in order for the engineer to prepare the reports and set time to file, which will be on January eighteen, twenty-twenty-three. January eighteen, twenty-twenty-three is when he'll submit the engineer's report.
You guys all hear that? January eighteenth.
Well, he'll submit the report. We don't do anything. We just accept it.
I know, but they were, a lot of them would like to see it.
Did you have an additional comment?
Just to clarify for the board, and maybe this is better a question for the Assistant County Prosecutor Pelts. The, should the board change the termini as recommended earlier in the presentation with the petition, or?
It's in the.
It's in the resolution.
It's in the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
And then the reasonable, let me see. Today was the first hearing on the engineer's preliminary report, and testimony before and against proposed improvement was presented. The board found that the proposed improvement is necessary, the proposed improvement is conducive to public welfare, and is reasonable, certain that the benefits of the proposed improvement outweigh the route and termini of proposed improvement will finally exist in ditches indicating the engineer's preliminary report. Is that good?
Okay, yeah, that's good. No, thanks for bringing that to our attention, though. We're good.
So is there anything further on that motion and second?
Any other discussion?
Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Commissioner Hung?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Aye.
And I understand the, the final hearing then will be, wait till you put your tape in. There we go. The final hearing will be March twenty-first.
Give or take March twenty-first. It all depends on the final.
That'll be that.
Engineer's report, and then we'll determine at that time. Yeah, she'll get another letter from me. You're welcome.
Any other business to address this morning?
Yes. You gentlemen and women that came in today, we appreciate it during the day like that. But have you ever thought, would an evening meeting be more appropriate? I just wanna see a show of hands. Would you be appreciative of an evening meeting? Okay, I just wanted to ask, I've been asking that question last meeting, so, thanks. Just wanna get your input. The Miller Lite guy's gonna bring it, I think.
Are you buying? No. Let's see. Next, we'll have the clerks report.
Uh, tomorrow, November sixteenth. Is that tomorrow? Yes, today's Tuesday. Tomorrow, nine-thirty, we'll have a commissioners' meeting, and on Thursday, we'll have a commissioners' meeting on the budget hearings.
Okay, very good. Okay, second.
Question. Commissioner Moore.
Aye.
Commissioner Lundey.
Aye.
Commissioner Hung.
Yes.
Very adjourned.